But I just want to add that. The case is 78 weeks become a 10. And if somebody was paying for the city, $75 million, they'd get a TIF, they'd get a tax break. Instead, they're getting ill debt.
So it'll be a good meeting. We will.
Well, maybe probably not.
Don't trust that guy, Mr. Trump. Don't trust him.
How you doing?
How you doing, Melvin?
Good to see you.
Howdy.
No, I'm not speaking. I'm not speaking.
That's it?
I want to give this commentary, but I don't know if it's here yet, but it's probably still...
Well, not yet. I have an exploratory...
State House route now, right?
No, he's coming with me. He probably...
Pete, have you gone by Paul Rattiy Young's house?
No. She held it lit up and everything? He's still got Christmas. He's still lit up. You want to just get back from the weekend?
Hey, that's what happens when you're in politics, right? You get to the most...
No, no, no. The polling don't care. The guy's a balloon. Those are the politics.
The real estate business is helping with the trust base. You know, it's just... He's doing good of all of selling out businesses.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad. I'm glad. Well, he's got the energy. He may as well direct it pretty soon. He isn't going to want to do much. So are you going to be contributing to the conversation?
No. The way it's organized is more like this is against the idea of alternating across the neighborhood. Maybe those are...
How did that happen?
You know better than anybody else. I just pretend I'm the chairman. So I can go sign on to the side.
I need this out. We've talked about this. But we have media...
I'm trying to figure out. And a real predator, you know, it's a... I think it's good fun.
I'll have to have a beer, sweetheart.
I don't know. Our commendations have been on certain jobs from...
I'm looking at one. I'm looking at one. Well, one time...
Your sense is... You know, you know, you're a company. It has to treat something that's... It has to... It needs to... That treat... And then it has to have a company.
Even the wording, if you look at it now, it is totally unpalatable.
It's hard. It's hard for enforcement to have.
Should I go look for Kennedy?
No, he's on his way. He's on his way. No worries. He's on his way.
Yeah, it is. There's going to be a lot of speaking, and it's already past 5:00. No.
When Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Kennedy is 10 minutes away from your start. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's after 5:00. I apologize for the late start. Councilor Kennedy will be joining us in probably 10 minutes or so, the other member of the zoning subcommittee. With that, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the role.
Chairman Nunez Oso.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy. Councilman.
Here.
Two present. Thank you. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really a continuation of the subcommittee meeting that we had in November, again, talking about some of the issues that are going on in the neighborhood. And I'm happy to see such a large turnout this evening. This is why we held the meeting for 5:00 instead of 5:30, because our regular council meeting starts at 6:30. Also joining us this evening, we have Councilor David Conway, Councilor Karen Cirillo, and Councilor Rita Mercia, along with Eric Slagle, our Director of Development Services, and Attorney Gary Gordon from the City Solicitor's Office. And again, we're here to talk again about the proposed ordinance before the zoning subcommittee. If it's okay with the audience, I'm going to ask Eric Slagle to just give a brief overview as to why we're here again this evening. Some of you are new to the zoning subcommittee. And then what I'd like to do is open it up for those that would like to address the subcommittee. What I'd like to... We did leave a piece of paper and a pen at the podium. If you could just sign in when you speak and give your name and address. And what I'd also like to try to do, if it's okay with the group, and I don't know if the word's fairness, but just to run a meeting where both sides feel as though they're being heard, that I'd like to alternate. So if someone comes up and they represent the landlord group, the next person that comes up may represent the neighborhood and vice versa. Just again, to keep it on kind of an even keel. Again, I think tonight will be again a listening session. I'm not sure, based upon all this information that we got this evening, and thank you for the hard work. I think it's 1,200 signature petition that we have here and pictures and so forth. And then there's another correspondence referencing fair housing, which might end up having some of this referred back to the, you know, back to the law department. So again, I appreciate everyone being here. And with that, I'm going to ask Eric Slagle to just bring us up the date as to where we are as of this date. And then, once my colleagues have comments or questions, we'll then open it up to the audience. And again, we do have our meeting this evening at 6:30. So is that okay with my colleagues?
That's fine.
So the chair will turn it over to Eric Slagle.
Thank you, Chairman Nunez Oso. Just a very brief overview of how we got to tonight's meeting. Back in the summer, there was a request coming from the council that was referred to the zoning subcommittee regarding concerns over violations of the city's zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance there requires no more than three unrelated persons per dwelling unit in the city of Lowell. And some folks from the neighborhoods were expressing their concern, and they had requested that the subcommittee take some sort of action. What came out of that initial meeting was a request from the subcommittee to myself and the law department to attempt to draft some sort of ordinance that allowed for greater enforcement of the existing ordinances in the city that mandate no more than three unrelated persons per dwelling unit. Subsequent to that, a draft was prepared. It was brought back before the subcommittee. At that time, members of the landlord group appeared before the subcommittee and expressed some concern about the language that was in the proposed amendments to the rental property ordinance, which was the mechanism by which the law department and the development services chose to address the issue. They expressed, again, concerns about the effect this would have on their businesses and on the rental population that they were serving. They made some requests to the subcommittee that we be directed, we, the administration, be directed to provide some sort of kind of alternate proposal that would allow for greater density in housing. And so that came back to the administration, and there was some work done with the law department and development services on our end, which came up with a draft that was substantially similar to the one we have now. There were some tweaks. That draft was submitted to the subcommittee. We had the hearing back in...
November.
November, where that draft was initially discussed. Folks spoke about it. The subcommittee ended without any, at that time, without any kind of resolution. And through a couple of fits and starts, we're back with a draft that has adopted a few of the requests of the subcommittee for minor changes in language, but is substantially similar to the proposals that we had back in November. And those proposals basically have two major themes. The first is, in one amendment to the rental property ordinance, requiring a greater level of scrutiny and some affidavits from landlords affirming that they are, they have, you know, obtained information to know that the people that they are renting to are not more than three unrelated persons per unit, and they would be required to submit affidavits to that effect to the city. And on the flip side, allowing some greater density with some caveats that were put in here by the fire department and with the fire prevention and the fire chief opining and development services to require greater fire protection, safety, some more heightened parking requirements in an effort to mitigate what we saw were the kind of negative problems that were coming with the denser housing, namely, greater fire danger and problems with parking in the residential neighborhoods. So those kind of two... I don't want to call them a carrot and a stick, but that's kind of how it works out. There's a... You can get greater density, but you have to do some things for it. You have to have your property sprinkled at a certain point. You have to make sure that you have sufficient parking on-site for your property. By the same token, the landlord would have to take steps to affirm that every unit that they have does not have more than three unrelated persons in compliance with the existing zoning ordinance. And I want to be very clear. It's one thing that has been kind of thrown around, and maybe it's my fault for not being as clear as I should have been. The requirement of no more than three unrelated people in the city of Lowell in a dwelling unit is pre-existing and has been here for decades. So that is the law. The law is, you are not allowed to have more than three unrelated people in a dwelling unit in Lowell. And to do that is a violation of the zoning ordinance. So we are trying to, with this draft, both enhance our enforcement of that and allow kind of an out for a landlord who believes that they have a safe building to meet some higher requirements, to make sure they have on-site parking, to get some greater density. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Slagle. Any questions at this point from my colleagues? I just have one question, if I could, to follow up on your density point and three more unrelated in the building. Can... I know the ordinance talks about having one person per bedroom. Are we still looking at that? Or if a landlord can improve the fire protection in the building, they could actually have more than one person unrelated in a bedroom?
So the cap on the amount of density we would allow under kind of the new standards would be up to one person per bedroom?
Okay.
So the idea would be, if you have a four-bedroom unit now, you can only have no more than three unrelated people living in that four-bedroom unit. However, if you met the heightened restrictions, you could rent to up to four separate people, because that would be one per bedroom.
Okay.
The same would be in a five-bedroom unit. You could, in theory, if you meet the heightened requirements, get up to five persons in a five-bedroom apartment.
Okay.
If you had the requirements that are in the ordinance.
Now, that ordinance pertains to rooming houses and/or boarding houses? Or is that...
This is separate from rooming houses and boarding houses. They already have... There's a pre-existing kind of framework within which those fit.
Yep.
This is a separate method to allow greater density while still maintaining what, I think, at least was the request of some members of the subcommittee, that does one person per bedroom seem reasonable?
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. I just saw Counselor Senator Kennedy coming in. At this point, if there are no other comments from my colleagues, I guess we would open it up to the public to come and speak. Again, if you could, state your name, sign the sheet for official record for the city clerk. Thank you again for being here. By the way, we also have a five-minute rule here in the council chambers, so that in the event that anybody goes beyond the five minutes or wants to take up more time than the chair feels is appropriate, I may ask you to wrap it up. So just so you know. Thank you. Counselor John Leahy has just joined us as well. Good evening.
Good evening, subcommittee members, Lowell residents at home and in the audience today. My name is George Trussman, born and raised in the city of Lowell, resident, living in the Petukaville neighborhood currently. I am a property owner and lifelong investor in the city, and I am also an alumni of the University of Lowell. I'm here today, along with many members of the Lowell Properties and Business Group and the Greater Lowell Landlords Association, to strongly oppose the adoption of this amendment to the rental ordinance. This amendment was created primarily to address the student parking issues currently causing headaches for the residents in the Petukaville neighborhood, but it does not solve the problem. Preventing students from obtaining parking permits or prohibiting them from parking on public streets and expecting them to park elsewhere in the city away from the university is just unrealistic. By forcing property owners to provide parking on non-existent open space on their property is also unrealistic. This amendment is also the result of perceived misconception that the city has rampant overcrowding of dwelling units, and in particular, among the university's student population. This is false. Most of the property owners we have spoke to rent to one student per bedroom and not two or three as portrayed per bedroom. The existing ordinance in the Inspection Services Department already addresses any violations involving overcrowding throughout the city. This amendment is the result of, also this amendment, is the result of the perceived misconception of rampant unruly behavior of the student population. This is also false. In talking with UMass campus police, we have found that the students have a code of conduct that they must abide by, and any plotting or misconduct off-campus is not tolerated. Any resident can call the UMass police for any violations and are encouraged to do so. They are there to address any student issues. We have asked how many complaints in the last year regarding student misbehavior. The answer was four incidences reported in the last year, 2018. Overall, this amendment is badly conceived and will create more unintended consequences than it attempts to solve. And here are a few. First, the definition of a housekeeping unit in the current ordinance is outdated. This definition of not more than three unrelated individuals occupying a unit does not reflect today's renters. Today's renters may be a group of professionals living together, a boyfriend, girlfriend, unrelated, with children from prior relationships, gay couples, lesbian couples. The combinations are many. This amendment would create havoc among these people who don't meet the requirement and by this definition would be displaced or evicted. Secondly, this amendment illegally requires that we, as landlords, violate the fair housing laws by asking questions of prospective tenants as to their relationship status in order to determine if they meet the requirements of this amendment. It requires property owners to sign affidavits under penalties, pains, or perjury in order to vouch for the accuracy of these illegal questions. I'll ask you, how many of you would dare to sign such affidavits? The amendment denies property owners the right to collect rents if any of the required documentation is not deemed proper by the city or is not processed in a timely manner. The housing courts would be flooded, another unintended consequence. This amendment shifts the burden of proof of compliance to the property owner rather than the Inspection Services Department where it rightfully belongs. Lastly, let me revisit the issue of student parking in Petukaville and the Lowell Highlands. Since this is where both campuses of UMass Lowell exist, the local residents bear the burden of student parking everywhere. I live in Petukaville, so I experience it as well. We at the Lowell Property Group have been brainstorming for a few months now on this topic. What we have discovered is that the university charges an exorbitant rate for parking on campus in their parking lots, such that many students can't afford to use them. The University of Lowell administration must help to solve this problem, either by lowering their rates or finding ways to build more parking for the ever-increasing student population. It has been suggested that the city sell unused surplus land specially Petukaville for additional student parking. As an idea. In closing, I would like to point out that very similar ordinances were tried in Worcester and Boston area and were struck down by the Supreme Judicial Court. What is needed is an informed public, a more cooperative atmosphere between city officials, the property owners, and a Petukaville neighborhood group interested in solutions. The existing ordinance already in place addresses most of the issues we talked about. Lowell does not need a cumbersome amendment that will not only disrupt the entire rental market in the city, adversely affect the now bulling real estate values at mortgages, and create chaos in the Inspection Services Department already struggling with a challenging workload. I urge every member of this committee to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I agree with a lot of what he said. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Nutter. My address is 248 Acropolis Road. I would like to begin speaking as an executive board member of the Petukaville Citizens Council, or PCC. The purpose of the council is to further the well-being of the interests of the residents of Petukaville and to keep residents apprised of local issues which affect the community of Lowell as a whole. We take our positions as members very seriously and want to stress, it seems to be lost in the dialogue, that the last eight words of our mission are, "Affect the community of Lowell as a whole." The issue at hand affects the entire city of Lowell. There's students downtown, there's students that live all over the place in Lowell. We would be derelict in our duties as executive board members to ignore or turn a blind eye to violations of city ordinances that directly affect not only Petukaville, but the community as a whole. We have been called out in numerous erroneous Facebook, Instagram messages, and radio talk show segments as recently as Monday morning with flat-out lies about our group and our purpose, which is why I'm stating it. We have not asked for changes. We are not out to discriminate against anyone. We are not pushing a new ordinance, and we do not refuse to meet. We refuse to meet privately in the interest of transparency because the entire city is involved in this situation. Lowell Property even mentioned Monday in their Instagram, they love discussing issues that affect all of Lowell. Thank you for pointing out exactly why we have asked for a public forum to discuss something that affects all of Lowell. We can agree on that. I'll now speak as a private resident who has lived in many South Lowell, Centerville Highlands, and Petukaville for the last 24 years. What started me getting involved in this situation was the blatant disregard of our current ordinance of single-family zoning by a developer who gave the neighborhood, the zoning board, and the city of Lowell the proverbial middle finger by initially not obtaining proper permits and building in such a way they required seven variances for their deceptive and illegal work. They disregarded the zoning board multiple requests as to something as simple as cleaning up the area. And if the property owners' group wants to point a finger at someone, point it at that guy. Were he not as brazen in his disregard to the rules and regulations, you're renting out multiple rooms to multiples of more than three unrelated people, might have continued to go unnoticed. I purchased a single-family home in Lowell in 1995 for myself and my kids, who were eight and nine at the time. I was present in a previous meeting, and I must say, I take offense that one of the property owner groups belittled a fellow Lowell homeowner because he only purchased one property in the city, and this investor purchased many and doesn't even live in the city. The city of Lowell enticed me and hundreds of others to purchase a single-family home in Lowell when they offered me and others down payment assistance. The city of Lowell talked up the single-family zoning neighborhood I ultimately moved into and aided me in purchasing my home. The city of Lowell is where I live, where I worked, and where I brought up my kids. And guess what? I knew I was purchasing in a single-family zone when I bought it. It's in the paperwork. My realtors knew it, the lawyers knew it, and those that say they are unaware of it in feigned ignorance, shame on you. I would like to add that as someone who is considered a senior... to school, know their neighbors, increase the value of their homes, and maintain the integrity of their neighborhoods. In closing, I would like to speak of exactly what we citizens are here about tonight: enforcements of ordinances. As you know, an ordinance is a legislation enacted by a municipal authority. Other words, law, command, rule, directive, regulation. To enact is to establish by legal authoritative action and specifically to make a law. And the municipal authority is the local governing board having legal jurisdiction. The city is the one that has the onus of enforcement. Mr. Slager is the one who added changes. He has that legal jurisdiction. Neither landlords nor the citizenry have legal jurisdiction, and the property owner group certainly doesn't want to police themselves, nor are they or citizens paid to work for the city of Lowell. The property group in one of its Instagram posts wrote, "The new zoning amendment will be enforced by letters, then inspectors knocking on doors!" Exclamation point. Owners must swear on pains of perjury or they will be fined. Fines will be $100 to $300 per day per unit. That's if the changes made by Mr. Slager were accepted and the group self-policed. But what they fail to mention is the current zoning ordinance does that. They are putting out that being a law-abiding, being law-abiding is a burden and a terrible thing that'll raise your rents. You can break the law and you will find. You break the law and you're inspected. There are consequences for doing illegal acts. It is not going to financially affect anyone who legally follows the ordinances. It is up to the city and Mr. Slager's office to enforce any and every ordinance in relation to the enforcement issue. It's up to the zoning board to deny variances for easier to ask for forgiveness than permission, folks, that do first and ask later. It is up to the city council to make sure the boards and all elected officials work to serve the constituents who voted and trusted the citizens in best interest of the citizens and city are paramount in their duties to this matters. If it's too hard to enforce, more staff should be added or there should be a person in the position who can effectively do so with the support of the council and manager behind them. I am asking the zoning subcommittee to uphold the law and not to allow for variances, which is supposed to be for hardships to be granted in these cases, for the ordinances to remain as is, and that there is no changes made as to the number of three unrelated persons sharing living space, nor self-enforcement of ordinances by landlords who have no legal jurisdiction nor incentive to do so. I am asking if you, as a zoning board subcommittee, support the lawless actions of some landlords or the integrity of your office, all our citizens, and our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Chair, I would like to recognize Counselor, Counselor Elliott joined us. Thank you, Counselor Elliott.
Hi. Hi. My name is Charles Kafasas, and I live in the Acre. And I'm here for, to do what I think is best for the city and to talk to all you counselors, okay? And because I've been trying to fix this for a long time, and I've been on my own, and I'll just give you a few of my experience that I had with the city hall and the people that work for the city. Now, I got here, you know, on my street, on Vanny's, Mount Vernon and Vanny. Now, there was a couple of, more than one unit, let's see, and I'm all over here. If you want the numbers, I can give them to you. They were burnt down, two families and stuff like that, and I saw that they were taking and they had another floor. So I went to, okay, I went to Sean, okay, and he doesn't work here anymore. He's happy to work for the Chenchford, okay? So maybe he didn't care when he was working here, because I find a lot of people that work for the city don't care too much about the city.
We're not going to get personal, sir.
All right, no personal, all right? We're just, I have to give you some feedbacks, because you know, a lot of times people tell you things, and it's not true, all right? So me as a, as a resident, born here in Lowell, okay, trying to give my opinion, if there was another way to do it, I would have been there. But I tried going to the different offices, managers, I went to the mayor's office before. They all know me, okay? You can tell them, the guy that's crazy, all right? They'll tell them, they'll tell you. So now I'm here to talk to your counselors. I've been to the mayor's office many times, and by right, it should have gone from the people, the, the person that works for the mayor should have gone to your counselors. And that's what the, that's the way it's supposed to work. Government is supposed to work for the people, okay? So now, so I went to see Sean, and I saw that they, you know, because people, first of all, even didn't have building permits one time. And so anyways, I see they put another floor, and it's a two-family, and we had troubles before, there's not enough parking. So then I saw Sean, then I saw, okay, then I saw this man, I believe, let's see, Craig, right? Okay, and, and I told him about it, and he says, um, because he, that was his boss, all right? And, and I tell him too about, you know, and Sean said, "Well, we can't stop him from adding another floor." And I says, "Well, it's two-family, how can you turn on? You can't make it more, it's a zone, two-family, it was a two-family house." "Well, we'll fix that. We'll just make it an apartment and add another floor." So we made a women's house out of it. So now, I tell this, this man right here, okay, and so there's not zone for, for women. He says, "Well, how can we enforce that? How do we know who's in the house and who's related and not related?" He says, "That's not enforceable." So now when he tells you things like that, that we're going to enforce it, I want you to beware, all right? Because you're the counselor, and you're in charge of the mayor, I mean, you know, in charge of the manager, so forth and so on. Now, I don't know, most of this gripe is from the previous administrations, so you know, I don't want to blame anything for the new one that's coming in, right? And there's a lot of good people that work for the city, a lot of good people, all right? So, so just like the lady said about the ordinance aren't being enforced, and now that's your job as counselor is to oversee it, because we're just the citizens here telling you the truth. And if you don't hear it from me, who are you going to hear it from, right? So, so that's what I'm here for, because you know, nobody here, I didn't hear anybody last time representing the Acre. And, and I really did like, last time I came here, a lot of good speakers and what happened, and I enjoy that, you know? Because I do believe the city is a good place to live, and we'll try to do the best for the city. So that I believe a lot, and if people in the city say to me, you know, they don't like the city, but they're working for it, then they shouldn't be here, all right? And so, so now, this is the big developer that bought all these places here, and now they're all women houses. And, you know, I hear music, and they're taking all the parking, and you, last time we heard, they said, "Oh, we're going to take care of that with the parking?" Well, let me tell you, the parking gives out plaques to all those students. First, they start at the temporary, and when I went to say, I looked at the line and said, "One temporary per unit, how come these guys getting all these temporary?" Okay, so now, they're just giving them a sticker, and they put in the street, Mount Vernon Street, a regular sticker, and they still give out a plaque for one unit. And, you know, that was, Nick, Nick was in charge at the time, he's not there anymore, which is good, okay? So the guy, I went down and talked to the other guy, the, he's pretty good, I think he looks like he wants to fix up the department down there, because I went to get a parking, a reserved parking, a decal, a sticker, you know? And, you know, I had the trouble last, last time too, is, um, if, if, let's say, if I go today and the sticker expired, let's say, a couple of months, they try to go back from the time I first got the, the plate, so they might try to cheat me two months, and that's not right. So I went up to the law department today to try to get that clarity, you know, to clear it out, because he says, "We've got to speak to the law department." And, and I spoke to the manager's office too. So far, I didn't get no response, all right? But we shouldn't be after the citizens here, you know? So you, someone should give an answer, and we don't get any answers, not from the mayor's office, not from anybody, not managers, nothing.
Again, I understand your point, but I'm going to actually wrap it up.
So this is what I'm trying to say, this is illegal now, all right? Now, he knows this happened because he allowed it. They allowed it, the city, the city did it. The city caused the problems in my neighborhood because they allowed it to happen. So when the lady said about the ordinance not being followed, I, I guarantee that's 100% she's accurate. I got proof, I can show you the pages here. I got the places where it was fired before. So all I'm saying is, you, you counselors, should look at it, because you're supposed to be for the people that can't speak for themselves, and that's why we elected you, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we'll, we'll, the city will follow up on that, Vanny and, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Roseanne. I'm the owner of 130 Walker Street. I strongly oppose the ordinance. In the ordinance, a 100-years-old law is brought and an enforcement rule. In the past 100 years, population profile, family structure has been changed, and all the discrimination law have been removed in the past year, past 100 years. So the current 21st century human right is guaranteed for different class people, black, Asian, Hispanic, poor, disabled, et cetera. All the people have the equal right for work and living. In the ordinance, first paragraph, landlords are enforced to ask tenants, application, applicants to give their relationship, marriage, and family status for rent. Based on 1968 Federal Fair Housing Law and Massachusetts Fair Housing Law, landlord could not discriminate rental applicants based on their marriage status, relationship, sex-oriented, sex, family status. As a landlord, I never dare ask their disprohibit question. If landlord asks this question and reject application, landlord will violate this equal right laws. We landlord rent to people by, by following the U.S. Department of Housing and the Urban Department hard guidance. In the ordinance, landlord are enforced to report and register tennis relationship to city. Based on the Mass Law 201 CMR 1700, any owner and/or company could not give out their customs information, include name, identification, et cetera, to any other parties without authorized. Landlord will violate the law to do this. We are, we as landlord should not break the law and discriminate against the people engaged in non-traditional and conventional living engagement. If landlord get sued, lawsuit by the any tennis or applicants because the landlord are forced to follow this ordinance, low city should be responsible for the any lawsuit and cost. Based on the date for low city current situation, media income 60, 46,000, Massachusetts medium income 77,000. Low income is much lower than Massachusetts medium income. Low rental, 58%. Poverty percentage is 22%. In the most of my applicants, two group, one group, about half with kids. I don't know their relationship. I cannot ask their personal information based on the federal law. And the more, half are family, are people without kids. Most of the applicants' income, weekly income is around $400. So it means the average yearly around is 19, around 19,000. Based on the government fair market rent 2019 in Lowell, the average yearly rent for one bedroom is 14,000. Financial minimum requirement for renting one bedroom unit is 42,000. If you look at low, medium, medium income 46,000, and the average applicant's income 19,000, one-year income, income is much lower than requirement 40, 42,000 for most applicants. How come could they offer, afford to rent a one-bedroom unit by themselves? This is why many young and low-income people group to rent a unit because, because of their economic, economic situation. If the audience are enforced, more poor people cannot afford to find a living place in Lowell. More people become homeless. City could not discriminate these poor and low-income people. About safety is not correlated with related or unrelated people, because Lowell has poverty 21%, though low, medium income compared with Massachusetts medium income, and minority and immigrant takes about 41%. Echo 21, and Hispanic, Asian 21%, Hispanic 19. Many of them live in the area, Centralville, Highland, and Echo. Many of them are poor and could not afford larger house. They live in.
I'm going to have to ask you to begin to wrap it up, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to try. They live in very crowded place, they don't understand English, do not know safety code, semi-environment, they don't know their right and law. These people and areas are more volatile, volatile to the safety problem. They need more attention and help. Several years ago, there was big fire knowing nationwide, at least six minority were killed, include kids. I believe city already took necessary action for this fire. Is that enough? City need to use unlimited resource to educate, training, and help this minority and immigrant and poor people have a safety daily life instead of targeting special people without significant data. In the now date, 21st first, you cannot divide people as a different class to treat. All the people have the equal right. We already have the safety, safety code, semi-code, fire code. We should enforce this instead of divide people and instead of discrimination people as a different group to treat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard McDonald, and I'm the president of the Greater Lowell Landlords Association. Many of you probably know me. We represent over 100 landlords in the Lowell landlords as well as local business groups. The biggest problem, and I'll be very brief, really, the biggest problem with this ordinance, as I can see it, is the word unrelated, because we are not allowed to discriminate, we are not allowed to ask a couple when they come in if they are related, and if the other couple that's going to live with them, are they related? This, this can end up being like a $20,000 fine at the Mass Commission on Discrimination. Our attorney was going to be here tonight, he couldn't make it, he's at another hearing, but he, he asked me if, he, he said he'd be surprised if the city. as I can see it, is the word unrelated. Because we are not allowed to discriminate, we are not allowed to ask a couple when they come in if they are related, and if the other couple that's going to live with them, are they related? This, this can end up being like a $20,000 fine at the Mass Commission on Discrimination. Our attorney was going to be here tonight, he couldn't make it, he's at another hearing. But he, he asked me if, he said he'd be surprised if the city council or any other attorneys advised the drafters of this ordinance amendment, because it has this very obvious problem. And it's the biggest problem that you've got, is this unrelated bit. We can't-
That's already in the ordinance, sir.
We can't get into that with tenants. And there's also some other issues here as far as how many people are allowed in one bedroom. I believe the state sanitary code regulates that. And for us to tell somebody they can't rent an apartment because there isn't enough bedrooms when easily two people can sleep in the same bedroom, and again, we can't ask if they're married if they're going to sleep in the same bedroom. We can't ask them to sleep in a separate bedroom. So there's quite a bit of problems with this ordinance. I think it should go back to the original drafters of the ordinance and see what they can do with it, but those are your biggest problems.
Okay, I think, thank you for your comments, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome.
I live right behind North Campus on Phoebe Avenue. It's only one block long. I've been there since 1999. I purchased my house when I moved here to begin work at UMass Lowell. I'm a professor in the College of Education at UMass Lowell, and it's been wonderful to be able to live so close to my work in a neighborhood that is warm and friendly, and where I have come to know many people who live near me. So, I want you to know, I'm not against the students in any way, shape, or form. I love our students, they're great people. I'm not against private enterprise either, but I am for safe and sane neighborhoods. And what I want to talk to you about is not something from educational research, but what it feels like to live in a neighborhood when these things called stealth dorms come in. And that's a nationally recognized term, I think, now. I first noticed it when I started to get mail. Every month, I get a letter where someone is trying to get me to sell my house for cash, no questions asked. And I suddenly began to wonder, what's happening? Why is my neighborhood being targeted like this? Why do they think there's money to be made if they can push me out of my house and put in something that they have in mind? I began to notice that the parking was getting a lot harder right in front of our house. One of these stealth dorms has taken up on the corner of Bodwell and Phoebe. I know it is such because of the number of people that are now living there, and the fact that there is a sign on the window that has been there for months, if not a year, that says rooms for rent. It's a boarding house. It's not, it's not an apartment house. It's a boarding house there. And it's not being taken care of. There are weeds in the front and the back that are as tall as I am. Now, I know I'm not very tall, but I'm looking them right in the eye, they're as tall as I am. Around the corner, there's another house that has taken the same dive. The garbage in front has been sitting out there for weeks. My husband has noticed that there's been an increase of paper floating around the neighborhood. He notices things like the fact that when the leaves fall off the trees and there is no one who is going to sweep them up, they're all over the neighborhood suddenly. We have also noticed that there is more trash being generated just in going out onto the street. I see a lot of people now in the neighborhood. I like to see the new students come every semester, I like to see new people in the neighborhood. But I'm beginning to get the feeling that I can't identify the numbers of people who are now arriving in my neighborhood. I'm worried that our neighborhoods that could support not only students, but also faculty and other young professionals who are looking for different kinds of accommodation are not going to find this a welcoming community, because there's too much going on that's just looking for the dollar and not thinking about the neighborhood's stability. And I know that the university is growing rapidly, I'm very aware of it, I live with it every day. I know that we're also hiring a lot of new young faculty and staff, it's amazing. And I love these people, and I want them to come live in Lowell. I was just talking to a new colleague this, this year who wants to find a small house in Lowell. Well, living near the university is a very good option for these hundreds of new faculty that are joining us. So I would like you to consider enforcing the law. We don't have to change the requirements here, but we need to enforce it. Because this, these notions of how, we're not, we're not asking people to discriminate. What we want is simply that our neighborhoods be safe and well-maintained. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dylan Ashambo. I was born and raised in the city, grew up in the acre on Butterfield Street, my parents still live there today. I am an alumni of UMass Lowell, graduate of Lowell Catholic. I'm in the city every day. Grew up, as I said, I went to school at the Hispanic American Academy, a few steps away. And I remember in the 80s, early 90s, the city, the boarded up homes, the boarded up buildings, downtown being somewhat of a ghost town. And for years, the city, you'd hear it, whether on CAP, local television, Lowell Sun, we always talked about economic development, how can we make the city better? We all love our city, we want it to prosper. Fast forward to today, and what I'd like to talk about is just the economic impact of the landlord group here. We have a vibrant city. Lowell has become a college town with UMass Lowell at the forefront, investing, growing. You know, it used to be that UMass Lowell was a safety school. It's no longer a safety school, it's hard to get into. We have people that come here from dozens of different countries. It is a destination college. And like it or not, the students have become a fabric of this community. The thousands of students that live in our apartments, they're customers, they support the local businesses, the downtown that is now thriving that has many new restaurants and taverns and stores. Our tenants are supporting these establishments. You know, we hire tradesmen, plumbers, electricians, carpenters, exterminators, landscapers, masons. We've created a whole cottage industry here that once upon a time didn't exist. You know, last time I spoke, you know, the city was being highlighted on HBO for documentaries that we all want to forget. You know, that's a thing of the past. You have a group of landlords here that care about the city, that have invested millions of dollars in the city. Are there bad apples? Yes, of course there are. You know, in any industry, there's, there's always, you know, a bad few. But we care about the city, we offer affordable housing to many students, international and domestic. And, you know, Lowell, we've always celebrated our cultural diversity, Lowell's a melting pot. This ordinance, how does it affect the people in the Highlands? You know, you have families coming here, multiple families living in one home. You know, you have, we have so much development going on with mail buildings, you know, the Sally Polley Project, Hamilton Canal, Jackson Street. We have young professionals now coming to Lowell, to live, to make their home here because it's affordable. So, what are we saying with this ordinance? We're saying, no, we don't want you? You know, the assessments have gone way up. One of the prominent speakers talked about, you know, getting letters in the mail. I know a story of an old elderly couple on Mount Hope Street that, you know, worked their whole lives in the mills and the factories here. They had nothing. They owned a small two-family home, they were able to sell it for close to half a million dollars. They retired, and they're living comfortably. The assessment, the tax, the tax bill has gone up because of the investment that we have made, the money that we have spent. You know, and with regard to the parking, many of these homes were built over 100 years ago when people didn't have cars. So, no matter what happens, I think parking is always going to be an issue in the city. You know, I heard somebody comparing us to Boston or Cambridge. Isn't that wonderful, that we have a parking problem? I mean, what are we going to say, no, we don't want you here, go away? So, my, you know, as somebody who lives here, is fun here, I've seen the transformation of the city. You know, we, we want to work together with the council, with everybody, let's make it better, let's keep the ball rolling. Thank you very much.
Deb Forgione, chairman of Patekville Citizen Council. Good evening, Eric. How are you? Okay, we came here in May to ask you to help us with the, yeah, sorry, got distracted there. We came because of so many violations in and around the city, we were asking your help for enforcement. At the time, Eric said it was daunting to do the enforcement, and Karen Sorillo came up with a very good way to explain the fact that as the city grew, especially the university, that the city wasn't staying fluid with that growth. So, in May, we came here, and everyone understood we have a problem catching up with the growth. He said it was a daunting task to be able to do the enforcement, and so what they did was they came up with ideas that they obviously felt were going to help them help us. So, it seems like it's a big bomb about that, because when we came to you for the big, for the enforcement of it, he needs help. He felt that that ordinance was going to help him. And you can see there's opposition to it. So, what can we do to have Eric and his department help the whole city and help us enforce what we already have in place? I think the best thing to do is to start what we have in place, put a plan together, give it a six-month plan, and see if it works. And if it doesn't work with what he has to work with, then he needs more people. If the university epically grew, then the city has to keep up with it. So, that's one of the suggestions that I have. I think we can all agree, and Eric can agree, that nobody helped you write that, that came from the city. That no neighborhood group, nobody here helped you write it, it came from you, the law department, and you felt that that was going to help you. So if you can go back and maybe find other ways to be able to make sure that we can enforce what we already have, that's going to be helpful. And just to let you know, since we were in May, I think when I was here in May, we talked about, these are the streets that we absolutely know that have violations. And when we say it's through the whole city, it is the whole city. So we came, it was Frothingham, Plymouth, Ellis, Varnum, Linden, Mount Hope, Martin, Riverside, Alma. And since then, South Lowell, we're finding out Blossom, that's epically having problems. In fact, there's a two-family that's now operating as a three-family without a permit for the third floor, yet they built a set of stairs to get to the third floor. And then we have a single-family home over there that's currently being run as a boarding house, and the neighbor observes it every single day and can tell you how many cars that are parked out there. There is no way it's not a boarding house. So, since we've been in May, not only do we still have Frothingham, Plymouth, Ellis, Varnum, Linden, Mount Hope, Martin, Riverside, and Alma, but now we're going to add Blossom to that, too. So it keeps growing, we haven't solved the problem, and we're asking is enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, before our next speaker, if I could just follow up in the, kind of in the spirit of those comments. At our last city council meeting, I believe it was Karen Sorillo who chairs the Neighborhood Subcommittee, we agreed to have a joint meeting of the Zoning Subcommittee and the Neighborhood Subcommittee, probably out in a neighborhood or neighborhoods in the next few months. So, stay tuned, we'll probably be hearing more of that. Councilor Sorillo?
Yes, that's correct. We're going to have a joint neighborhood and zoning subcommittee, so that we can, we can have the neighborhoods learn more about this.
Right. And I think that kind of follows up on the last person's comments about enforcing what we currently have on, on, on the books. So, again, before we end this meeting, I'll have a couple of questions for, for Mr. Slagle, but again, welcome. Thank you for your patience, thank you.
Hello. My name is Robert Barbuda. I went to and I'm a graduate of UMass Lowell. I've lived in Lowell for the past seven years, and for the past five years, I've worked for Duro's Properties. Since I've graduated, I've stayed here, and it's been my plan to make an investment here in Lowell and buy my first home here. I'm concerned that the city is taking a stance against UMass Lowell and its students, which in my opinion is not in the best interest. When I was a student, I lived in a six-bedroom apartment with five roommates at one time, and then a five-bedroom apartment with four roommates at another time. This is what I needed to do to be able to afford the rent, because I couldn't afford to live on campus. The apartments that I lived in were very nice and renovated, beforehand being condemned or at the very least, very rundown. The neighbors made it clear to us that they were happy that we moved in and we were improving the neighborhood. The main thing I'd like to talk about tonight is the neighborhoods and streets that I used to live on, specifically Bowers, Broadway, and Varney Street, and how drastically these areas have trained, have changed because of the people behind me. You cannot walk down one of these streets alone, and really, it didn't matter if you had a group with you, it wasn't safe. We would hear gunshots, witness all sorts of gang violence, drug deals, stabbings, shootings, and more. You were constantly worried about not only walking around at nighttime, but also in the daytime. Today, these issues do not threaten these streets like they once did. All these buildings are brand-new, and they change, and the change of demographics has been an improvement for the city. It is my understanding from what I have read and heard, that one problem the city of Lowell wishes to correct is something to the effect that Lowell has a problem keeping the talent in Lowell, and wanting to keep the best and brightest that graduate here, here. The city of Lowell should embrace the students. If you make the restrictions that this ordinance suggests on where unrelated people or students can live, then you're jeopardizing all the progress and growth that has happened over the past 10 years. Thank you.
Good evening, chairman, councils, and officers. My name is Shi Hongden, and I own rental properties in Lowell. I'm strongly against the new proposed edits to the rental property ordinance. Firstly, is there any evidence that a group of over three unrelated talents is more dangerous or problematic than a family of 10 live on the same property? From my personal experience, all of my talents have been exemplary citizens who have not caused any issues in the neighborhood they lived in. I have some talents who graduated last year from UMass Lowell, who now have their decent jobs in Newton, Lexington, and North Reading. However, they still enjoy living in Lowell with their friends and spending their income on local business. Under the current proposals, I would, I would have to force these young professionals out of my property for no apparent reason. Do you really think these are the people we should be forcing out of the city? Secondly, most talents are low-income people who need affordable housing in the city. The current proposals stimulate that every talent need to be registered to the city under the penalty of perjury. This means that if some of my talents are found to have some friends over, or if relatives are visiting them, they could get into deep legal trouble. This proposal is unfairly targeting low-income residents of the city, and this is economic discrimination. It's a shame. Thirdly, the proposals to the fire code are completely out of line. The city of Lowell has a pre-existing fire code, and if you want to amend sections of that, it should not be- that, it should not be lumped in with the rental property code. A house with six unrelated people living there should not be treated any differently from a house with six relative, related people living there in regards to fire safety. Having a rental code with such a stipulation in place that the lives of unrelated people are somehow less precious than the life of related people, and that's absolutely ridiculous. In conclusion, this proposal will be forcing out Lowell-abiding young professionals who are a vital part of the Lowell economy, and discriminating against Lowell-income residents of the city. Some parts of the proposal, such as the fire code section, are completely out of line and poorly sought out. This illustrates that the, the complete lack of effort that was put into the proposal, and I hardly believe something as half-baked as this should be put into Lowell. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Paul, excuse me, before Mr. Blay speaks, the Chair recognizes Council Kennedy. Excuse me, Paul, for one second.
I just wanted to point out, several speakers have come to the microphone in, in reference that more than three unrelated people, that, that is not part of the proposal, that's been in the ordinance for many years, hasn't it? That's existing.
That's correct, for decades, that's the law. So, so anyone who's currently, a, a, a unit that has more than three unrelated people in it right now is not legal, it has not been legal for decades, that's...
But it's never been enforced for 50 years.
That's right, that's the point. Point is, it's impractical.
The, the point is, my point is, that that's already in the ordinance, that's not what's being proposed here this evening, it's, it's already there and has been there. Because it's been ignored or not enforced, doesn't mean that it shouldn't be, should be ignored and shouldn't be enforced.
So, how, how are we going to resolve that?
Well, 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 again, I'm going to let Mr. Blay speak, but I think I'm hearing from this, from both sides, if I could say, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Slagel.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify one thing very quickly that the last speaker mentioned. The section that talks about a, a, a single-family property which has six more unrelated individuals and requiring a fire sprinkler system, that was put in at the request of the fire chief and it comes directly from the fire code. That's not new, that comes from the fire code, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. But again, what, what I'm hearing tonight, from, again, I don't mean to put this quote, but from both the pros and the cons, if you will, is that we need to do a better job with enforcement. So, that's something that we're going to, we're going to bring back to the administration. Again, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, we're going to bring that back to the administration to come up with a plan, as, as a result of maybe the joint meeting between the zoning subcommittee and the neighborhood group. Chair recognizes Karen Sorillo, then I'm going to get to Paul.
Um, I'm, I'm going to just mimic what, what you, the Chair said. I, I find that what's happening is that the, the neighborhoods are more frustrated with enforcement than anything, not, not necessarily the ordinance or changing the ordinance, uh, what have you, it's, here is the ordinance, enforce it so that we can feel comfortable in, in our homes, that we can feel safe in our homes. That's, that's what my take is from this evening also, and I look forward to the joint subcommittee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, Paul, thank you.
Yeah, but thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Paul Blay, 65 Alma Street. I'm not going to echo and repeat some of the things that we've heard here tonight, but I'm hearing the landlords, some of them live in the city, some of them don't, about the investment they've made in our city. Well, let me tell you something, I've been here for 37 years, living in the same neighborhood. I made an investment 37 years ago, and I had to remake an investment in 2006 when my neighborhood got flooded, and 11 months later, when our neighborhood got flooded again. Some of those folks never came back. Then landlords came in and bought some of these, you know, homes that people walked away from, and said, "Beautiful, they're going to fix up these houses?" Well, next thing you know, I've got seven student housing in my neighborhood. They paved over the green space for parking, the yards are totally paved over. All I'm asking from you landlords is respect our neighborhoods, maintain your properties. Our kid, the kids, listen, I was 20, 21 years old one time, I get it. I got one right across the street from me, I go over every fall, we have our little talk, old people over on your side, old people across the street, you know, I get it. So, I'm just asking you landlords, take care of your properties, respect our neighborhoods, and do right by the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
The pen's gone. Hi, my name's Peter, I have a property in River, on Riverside Street. I just want to state one thing, that my, the ordinance has a very dangerous side effect. Basically, that on the ordinance, in the event of complaint made to the local police department, there will be inspection. Fine, okay. Anytime, any of, basically, this ordinance will criminalize landlord and every homeowner. Very simple, anytime any of you or us have a party, a disgruntled neighbor can call the police, "Oh, the motor car there, see if they rented out the house." Police will knock on your door, ask you, "Are you renting a house?" If you're holding it, you say, "No," fine, but can you show it, documents? You don't. Second case, if you have a disgruntled neighbor, they're going to call the police, report every properties around him, or her properties, without any reasons, you just suspect someone will rent the house to anybody's. Then every neighbor, any owner in the neighborhoods will be inspected. And then the third thing is, if someone, let's say you have a friend temporarily living in your house for a month or two months, now you have unrelated peoples in your house, and then you become criminals, or because you didn't report anything to the city halls. So, that ordinance is very dangerous, and violate the property right, and also, basically, turn every neighbor's against each other's. Thank you.
Good evening, my name, for record, is Curtis LeMay, 40 Roberts Street, Pathecaville Section, lived in Pathecaville my entire life, my family's been there 100 years. And I might add it, one time I sat on this other side of the rail for a few terms. And that's kind of why I'm here, because I have to go back a little in history. Council of Milonazo hit the nail on the head as far as enforcement. 30 years ago, the problem over there with, with the university and that, wasn't so much the university, it was the frat houses. Frat houses were at the point that my phone would ring at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning at any given night, with all these so-called keg parties, students walking the streets. So, what we did was, we had a meeting with the university, the police chief at the time for the university was Chief Rowe. Chief Rowe's hands were tied to the point that he had no jurisdiction outside the bounds of the university where the frat houses were as far as...
Excuse me, Curtis, can you speak into the microphone, the TV watch will be able to pick you up.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So, we had a, a meeting with the chief, I mentioned it was Chief Rowe at the time. What we did was, we come up with a solution as far as that goes. The sheriff of Middlesex County at the time deputized the university police department so they would have jurisdiction and police powers outside the boundary of the university. Okay? Now, this all comes with enforcement. So, the problem also was parking. So, we came up, and I was somewhat involved, obviously, it was residential parking stick-up, like we have in other sections of the city, we did it in university. And in order to enforce that, we hired more meter maids. And the police would be there when called, because at the time, the police department only had half of what they have today, and the university, we'd work with one another. The problem I have is, some of the residents in the particular neighborhood of Mount Hope, Gersham, Gardner Avenue, we had people living there for generations that ended up moving. It broke my heart, but, you know, there's not really not much you can do. I, I did my best, but I, it's hate, you hate to see people at loggerheads and not get anything done. I think this needs a little tweaking as far as what we've heard tonight, and it all boils down to enforcement. There was one time we had another issue with the, the zoning code, and we hired more inspectors. If it takes another inspector and you got to raise the permits up a few dollars, I think the people would be happy if they're right enforcement at there. And you have the cleanliness of the city and all of this that goes along with it, so, um, I, I think it can be done, it's been done before, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you, Curtis. Excuse me, I think, I think, I think David was up next.
You want me to go?
I'll be fast, I'm going to be real fast.
Yeah, we're up in the meeting room, yeah.
If you don't mind, the only thing I'd, I'd like to...
Microphone, please.
...the packets that we gave you.
Yes.
I'd like to tell you what is in the contents of there and show how it's relevant.
Okay.
I, I could be the last person.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate your patience, we'll call you right back up.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening. Now, to start with, we're all friends in the room, we're just going through a bad time, we should be getting along, a lot better along with each other. But one of the things I have that I don't get is, I've been a housing inspector for years, and when I, with the state sanitary code, it states that if, you know, if we have a two-bedroom house, you have four bedrooms, you, you can put four people in there, if you have a three-bedroom house, you can put six. It's like that from Cape Cod to the other end, from Maine down to Rhode Island. Sandy McNamara is here, she was a health inspector, we've been writing this out, the health permits forever, and it's, it's everywhere. So, the tenant housing selection agreement with Mass Housing and HUD also states, well, if you have a tax credit or bond programs also, that a two-bedroom with the appropriate square footage should have four people, and that relationship does not matter. And if you check with HUD and you check with that, you go to River Placed Hours, you have to have four people in that two-bedroom, it's mandated. So, I don't know how, I know the zoning is one, so if you play it on the zoning side, you can get this, but if you go with the state sanitary code, which has been around forever, and all it is, is just two people per bedroom, as long as it's over 70 square foot, you can have one person in a bedroom, every 50 foot for every other person. So, a, a bedroom that has 120 square foot, you're allowed, according to the state, to put two people in there. And if you have a four-bedroom, you have four people. It contradicts that, so you have to make a decision, are you going with the state sanitary code, or are you going with the zoning? It's, so it's not, been there forever, they've both been there forever, it's which side as a counselor you want to choose us to be. These meetings have been going on for almost eight months, this is a, with this ordinance, neighborhood representative been asked to sit with landlords to come up and decide what this ordinance should be, but bring about three people each to the meeting and stay scheduled in the mayor's chambers. Well, there was things about people didn't show up or they whatever, but neither side needed to show up, because this is not a decision to be made by a certain amount of neighborhood issues or a certain amount of landlords, because neither one can speak for the whole city. This is the thing that needs to be said by the council, the council needs to finally bring this to, to a vote. There are hundreds of landlords in the city, including family-owned, the nonprofits, I, there's church groups, I've been in these apartments where there's six, seven people in there because they're coming in from another country or whatever, and it's part of the CTI program, part of International Institute, part of that. So, you're going to have to stop those programs too if you go with this, because you can't do selective enforcement. If you're doing it, you're doing it for everybody. This has pitted great people from the neighborhoods against great landlords, this is a decision of the subcommittee to finally bring this to a vote. We already did that one. The ordinance is unrelated to us, as being a past senior inspector in the department, and in no way or form, we have the manpower, resources to review thousands of documents, there's 26,000 rental units. So, all of a sudden, you're going to say, "Are you related, you relate?" Where are we going to even put all that paper, and how is anybody ever going to look for it? So, the only thing you're going to do again is to select for enforcement, all of a sudden you don't like a certain thing, or you want to look at this one, you'll go look for those files, and, and you can't do selective enforcement again. And that related unless you choose to do selective enforcement. We did this in the need program, while we were here, we had a lot of problems, we took the 12 worst landlords in the city, and we did it through strict code enforcement, we went in with police, fire, health, and building, and we solved those problems, we got rid of those bad landlords. So, enforcement does work. And, and we need to program with strict code enforcement, just follow the state sanitary code and send the teams to the problem properties, and most issues we've drawn. This is a blanket solution to a few properties that are having problems, and there are problems, they, that do need to be addressed, 100%. Everyone here has better things to do, um, to do, the longer this takes, the more harm it does to our neighborhoods. There are a lot of good people in this room, and when it started, the Chair stated that each side has a right to speak. We are not sides, we are not against each other, we just need a decision made so you can move this forward to a council vote. We are not sides, yeah, we are all citizens. So, please, take all this information, and let's not continue this for many more months, because look at all these people, we're all friends. We don't need to be going through this, we just need a decision to be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark G. C., I spoke at the previous meeting. I'm sorry. We provided a little packet for all of you. It was kind of ad hoc, we put it together real quickly, but what it contains is, the top thick layer of it, up until the yellow sheet, is basically the petition that we put out, it's an online petition, it's ongoing, we have a lot of signatures on it. I, I apologize for a few of the comments that some of the people made, this is what happens on a, a public forum sometimes. The, the first group of pages, I, I provided one of these health certificates. Now, one of the things that I'm disputing, that I'm puzzled by, is I keep on hearing a reference to enforcing the existing code, and it goes back decades, okay? I've searched for it, I'm not the world's greatest researcher, but I have not found it, okay? Where this ordinance was put into place, and if it ever was enforced, okay? My suspicion is that when, when, when the question was asked at one of the meetings, it was said, we, we researched back to 1991, but not further back than that, okay? I think that's very relevant, because if you read that certificate that I provided, people in our group, so far, we go back to as far as 1999, and as recent as till they changed the inspection certificates, so that the new ones now say that in this particular apartment with two bedrooms, you can have four people. It doesn't mention how many people. But more specifically, the certificate that I provided to you, if you read it, it refers to section, I think, 15-13 of the Lowell zoning ordinance dated July or something like that, 1971. I have yet to find that particular ordinance, but it references that ordinance, it also referenced the sanitary code. I, at the second page, I provided the, the statement of the sanitary code and how it reads, it's very simple, Dave just iterated that, okay? So, what we have is, going back at least until 1999, up until, I think about 2013 or 14, we have certificates in our hand that are exemplified by the one I provided to you, and it says that basically, according to the ordinance and the sanitary code, you are allowed to have six people live in this three-bedroom apartment, makes no mention of relationship whatsoever. My suspicion is, the reference to this old ordinance that's decades-old is probably the Lowell, I mean, um, the Roaming House Boarding Law, which dates back to World War I, it's a 100-year-old law, okay? Fast forward to 2013, the Supreme Judicial Court, in a case which would be identical to this, what we're talking about, ruled that these apartments cannot be looked at as a boarding house, and all the legal language and so forth, and it struck it down, giving the landlords the right to rent to these unrelated people.